Nine oh four, I'd like to call the Adams County Board Supervisor to order. If you would, ask him to wrap the view of the invitation.
Hello, say hello, pray. About is, them and Father, we thank you this morning, O God, for allowing us to see another day. And Father, we just continue, continue to pray for our elected officials, Father, continue to give them wisdom from all high. And Father, we just continue to bind them closely together to make decisions for the people of this county. And Father, we just want to pray for individuals that they have lost any love on throughout the last two weeks, right? We ask that you come for the families and give them comfort, Father. We pray for our first responders. We pray for our teachers. We pray for our kids. We pray for our nurses and our doctors. We also pray for our finances. Father, we just continue to allow business to come into this great county, in this state, and in this country, O God. And Father, we just want to pray, O God, today, O God, just continue to bless us as we expect weather to come. Father, keep this county safe and surround the counties. Bless our responders on the night, O God. Father, keep them safe, O God. And Father, we just ask you to pray, Son Jesus, amen.
Amen. As you pray, you notice our family relations to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I can do the roll, call the officers, Supervisor Gray there, Supervisor Hutchins.
Yeah.
Supervisor Miltonson.
President.
Supervisor Wilson.
Yes.
Supervisor, I mean, Democratic Party Dean.
Present.
Chancellor President Lewis.
Present.
Attorney General. And I'm President. All right, I need a motion for the approval of the docket.
Amen.
It's been properly moved by Supervisor Wilson, properly seconded by Supervisor Hutchins. Would that be in discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Claim number five oh six, dated November third, November month third, date twenty three. And transaction number is two four oh eight one six. I'm going to get that.
All right, you got it. All right, would that be in more discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I got a question. Please, a clarification on this one, I want to make sure there ain't no fear. Did we get that much right there? Yes, sir. Thank you.
You know what went up for violence, you know?
Oh, did?
On our new bid.
All right, any more discussion? If there be no more discussion, all in favor vote by using sign of I.
I.
Any opposed, may they have the same right, motion carried, you know? All right, we down to county bidding, Mr. Melissa Graham. Mr. Melissa Graham, update on, a minute. Miltonson? Oh, Melissa. Okay, all right. We down to city government bidding, if any? City government bidding. If there be no city government bidding, I'm down to departmental report. Departmental report.
Good morning, board, everybody. I just got a couple things this morning. We're expecting some weather to come in tonight. We, our officers, we going to weather prepare this road department, they're with Cap. Captain McGee, he's doing the weather briefing on the weather service, so we're going to come out with a weather plan after two o'clock. So we'll send that out to everyone. So like I said, if we get severe weather, we open the safe room tonight. Hopefully, you know, we don't have too many pile of trees. In event of that, we just want people to be prepared tonight. If we get in the pile of trees, if we got to get roads, trees down, the base of that nation, we got high winds. We already know the road department, we not going to put our guys in danger until everything passes. So we just need to make sure people stay put, and hopefully we work with Sheriff Office tonight. Make sure we have enough coverage on the ground in case of severe weather to get out. Also, the last thing, I remerciate management performance grant due. I did our county application work plan. I just need the board president to sign our form. This is for our grant money we did.
All right.
Yeah, I need you to approve.
Here's the request that the American Management can't get along. It's been properly moved by Supervisor Gray.
Sir.
I mean, Miltonson? Man, he ain't good as long time. Probably seconded by Supervisor Hutchins.
Wilson.
Man.
Wilson, would that be in discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Gray, how much is it? I think it's like twenty nine thousand dollars, normal charge, salary reversal.
I can say a question, somebody will know if the burn ban still in place.
All in favor, vote by using sign of I. If it's in a poll, may they have the same right, motion carried, you know? Mr. Brett, she's going to have to have a copy for the rep.
Y'all gonna go get a copy real fast.
Okay. Uh, yeah.
That's all I have.
Oh, yeah? Well, I guess we can ask that man, of course, because I had a call.
He coming up.
Come on, Mr. Smith.
Morning, there, Smith, Fire Board Day, Adams County. Uh, Governor, the van that had been lifted, and so we going to try to see how it's going to work out. So we not under burn ban right now.
All right.
But we still asking the resident, be careful, you know, because of the high wind, all that fire can, it's still kind of dry. But uh, it getting raining, but still can get out of control. So they have to be careful. If you going to burn, kind of watch it. Make sure it don't get out of hand. And other thing I have, Brandon, breathe it.
Okay.
That's all I have.
All right, any questions for Mr. Smith? If there be no questions for Mr. Smith, we thank you.
All right.
All right, departmental report.
Three. Good morning. Phil, Governor, the Intervention Court. I presented an MOU with Harbor House. David supervisor, a copy of what's been through Attorney's Labor. Just need to get it spread across the minutes.
What, what is the Harbor House?
It's a MOU memorandum, running with the Harbor House.
It's a treatment facility.
A treatment facility.
Is that a jack?
Yes.
Attorney Scott, have you had time to look over the MOU?
Get board, it's time. It's function reimbursable, let's give it up.
All right.
Yes, reimbursable?
Yes.
You heard the request of Mr. Benson, you heard the confirmation that is from the attorney, so can I get a motion?
Yes, sir.
It's been properly moved by Supervisor Miltonson, probably seconded by Supervisor Wilson. Would that be in discussion?
Yes, sir. How much is it?
I think it's on the last page of the Harbor House, gives their rate.
Which one is it?
It's on the back, the last page.
Supervisor Gray there answer your question?
Yes, sir.
All right, would there be any more discussion? If there be no more discussion, all in favor vote by using sign of I. Any opposed, may they have the same right, motion carried, you know? All right.
The second thing that I presented this morning, each one of y'all, is the, a copy of the compact with MSPHI for fifty thousand dollars. So this city public health is two forty thousand dollars, the same grant that was awarded to Adams County District Court that Mary Kate already presented last time. The only difference is that, is the dollar amount. And we will need a new fund created for that.
Cap, Brandon.
There's no, it's all fully reimbursable, right?
Yes, that's fully reimbursable. We already have it, the fifty thousand dollars broken down in a budget request as to how we want to delegate.
Okay, so you do have that budget sheet that has it?
Yes, it's included in the.
Okay, thank you. I'll get that to you.
All right. Any more question? Any more question? If there be no more discussion?
There's nothing for me.
Motion. Been properly moved by Supervisor Hutchins, properly seconded by Supervisor Gray. Be no discussion, all in favor vote by using sign of I. Any opposed, may they have the same right, motion carried, you know? All right.
The last thing that I have is an MOU on behalf of the Mental Health Court. This Dean has a copy of it for you to present, signed by Judge Blackwell. Client's change has been sent to Attorney's Labor, if you do as well. I'm just, was asked to present it this morning because the amount of treatment, case manager and coordinator are, I'm told, with Jackson.
Yes, well, Scott, have you had time to look over this, because?
Yes, they, they, you from Mental Health Court, is that what you asking?
Yes.
Yeah, but they both didn't provide their per-current, so as long as they're reimbursed, reimbursable, and they stay within their budget, it's not a problem.
All right, well, you, so can I get a motion for approval, memorandum, understanding? Been properly moved by Supervisor Hutchins?
Sir.
By Supervisor Wilson. Would that be in discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor vote by using sign of I. Any opposed, may they have the same right, motion carried, you know? Be in there, yeah? All right, departmental report's there.
Good morning, board.
Good morning.
First thing I have, we want to add, again, with me to have a file, it's based on State Department Road. The board know that. Next thing I have, A one silly come in, ground down MLK, Liberty Road, a couple spots on Kingston Road, at the Lee. For another project, I might have to come back in, I do have twenty in my budget to finish up. County Road is several more spots on Kingston that we need to finish up, so.
That's where we're going to grind it down?
Correct.
I don't know if the board will, they're all heater.
First week, second weekend, December, I'll have them here, or try to have them here, and then get, finish up on the. Next thing I have, the advertise for the Dogger, I spoke with y'all last meeting about it, and I spoke with Denise. I'd like to, she would like to advertise in December the thirteenth, December the twentieth, and have bid, I'll put it anywhere for. Our buyback on that Dogger, one fifteen, Jay and Woods, give them a guaranteed buyback of one nineteen four hundred. I'd like to go to that route with Jay and Woods, it could possibly be more. I could have a contract, and if it's signed by Board President.
It's been properly moved by Supervisor Hut, I mean Supervisor Miltonson, and properly seconded by Supervisor Hutchins, would that be in discussion?
No, it hasn't been in the budget, right?
Our buyback comes off, you know, when you come out, February twenty fourth, that's about one of those programs, we have all my equipment and stuff in there. So, yeah, it was put in, got to do about it, so.
What, what generally happens with the money on the buybacks? That, it was suggested by Chuck the other day that if we, if we were to do this, that money need to go towards the purchase of the.
He gets into that on the excavator, yeah, we got a new excavator a few while back, and the buyback, when it come off, we talking about taking that money and putting it forward. I don't know if that's how they.
It's supposed to go back, I mean, road fund, permit deed, or pay debt service, or to, or to buy, the new equipment.
Then again, it's got to cut out, it's supposed to go back to what?
To, it goes right back into one fifty, one sixty, to either pay debt service or to buy the equipment, as, as given, that's what, that's what it's supposed to get.
They're supposed to go back into?
Either road or bridge.
What, road or bridge?
Or way.
All right, any more discussion? All in favor, vote by using sign of I. Any opposed, may they have the same right, motion carried, you know?
I'd like to get a resolution. I spoke with the board before about the road department, and we talked about it throughout our Road Manager Association meetings about the road department coming first, being first responder, and we're moving ahead with it. We're trying to get resolution signed by all counties. We're going to discuss it, and I wanted this year, January twenty third, twenty fifth. And I do have a resolution, if I could get permission from the Board President to sign for that, to say y'all support the road department being first responder.
It's been properly moved by Supervisor Miltonson, and properly seconded by Supervisor Hutchins, would that be in discussion?
Oh, yeah, probably, Mr. President, but I do need a copy just to see what you say.
I'll get, like I said, I got one for you to sign, and then I'll get her to make the copy.
Any more discussion?
Make sure you're about to get a copies.
I'll sit, I'll get her to get that.
If there be no more discussion, all in favor, vote by using sign of I. Any opposed, may they have the same right, motion carried, you know?
With that being mentioned, I guess I'd like to have permission for myself to make, to make that conference on the twenty third, because the twenty fifth, January, I hope it's already.
Do we approve?
I think that's how I made it, that's how I thought, thank you.
Well, it did, uh. She, uh, she, she didn't include just Meg? All right, I need a motion, so we can also include Meg in this, uh, group of a tribe. Been properly moved by Supervisor Miltonson, properly seconded by Supervisor Wilson. Would that be in discussion?
Mr. President, so the assistant is not.
He only goes to, you know, to the big conference on the, on the summer conference is where he goes. That's where a lot more of our information comes to, you know, of that.
All right, would there be any more discussion? All in favor, vote by using sign of I. Any opposed, may they have the same right, motion carried, you know?
My other question, you know, I know me and Wes have spoken about it a little bit, just get some clarification on it, on that money we got for Coffin Point Road, to do that, of how it needs a big spin, or how we going, we have to have an engineer involved to do it? Can we go out, I mean, have to put it up for bids to, to the project, or the county working house, or do some of it? Get some clarification on how we can spend that money.
Only. I have no prior, I, I, I have knowledge of, I do have knowledge of the money, been, that's, that's been there. But I have no prior knowledge, I mean, any other knowledge, um, moving forward. But I, I mean, this is the first time it come for me that I heard, so I'll have to ask the Mr. Attorney. When it comes to that, I need to figure out what can we do, and how can we do legally with that? Because it was granted by the state, am I correct?
Correct. It's already been in the account, am I correct, Mr. Lewis? Go ahead.
Yes, sir.
All right, hold on just a minute before you respond, Mr. Attorney, Supervisor Miltonson.
The only answer, the only question that I can answer on that is, there does not have to be an engineer. We're not required to use an engineer in that funding.
Is, is it a new capital project, or is it just repairing a road is the question? I could get with Robbie and Wes, you know, next week, and, and make sure that we don't be, have to have an engineer by State Hall.
Well, I, that's what I need, just to check the law, and report back to the rest of the board, I guess. Uh, you know, I definitely be interested in knowing, and what about the rest of the board?
Well, Mr. President, we, we, we got that money through President Robbie Johnson. I would think that it's no different from any other fund that we get from the state of that money, too, that you got guidelines that we need to follow. We just can't do what we want with that money, so it should be some guidelines in place to make sure that we follow the guidelines.
And I spoke to the state last week, and they did provide a letter, and it basically just said, as long as it is for the repair of Coffin Point. It was, it wasn't very detailed in what the requirements are.
Yeah. Yeah, like I say, I have no problem with it at all, saving that money, or what we, what we need to do, but I just definitely got to be within guidelines of what's going on. I, I need to be within guidelines, so Mr. Attorney, would you check on that, and give me a good answer on that, and not just me, after you finding out, will you share with the rest of the board?
Yes, President?
Yes, sir.
And ask him to put it, put it here right.
Email it to him, if you would.
Got it.
Supervisor Gray would, email so that, I appreciate it. All right.
All right, the last. Don't worry, let's, right, go.
There can't be a fourth name, right?
Just joking, yeah.
All right.
Last thing I have is a court request, it's fifty nine, stand by.
I do have it in my hand, a court request from Mr. Sherwood, and then. If improper move by Supervisor Hutchins, can I get a second? Proper second by Supervisor Wilson, would that be in discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor, vote by using sign of I. Any opposed, may they have the same right, motion carried, you know? All right. Yes, sir, Attorney.
Yes, sir, Robbie, yes, the road crew did that work on Tubman Circle, one two six Tubman Circle?
Yes, we, the homeowners cleaned up, I think, three out of four of those lots, and we went cleaning the last lot up, last week, or the week before the road crew cleaned that one up, but the other, two or three were done by the homeowners, or property owners.
So on one two six Tubman Circle, Meg submitted to the E, an invoice for a hundred, I'm sorry, three hundred eighty five, so three hundred and eighty seven dollars, fifty nine cents. If the board wants to assess that to the, to the property owner, we have to do it by resolution at this meeting. And then on top of that, you can, you can assess the settlement if you so desire.
That's a lot we cleaned up, the time.
Yeah.
Over factory, man hours, and things.
All right, uh, did anybody at the table hear the attorney? If we did, what's the pledge of the board?
What's that dollar amount?
Three hundred.
What, three hundred eighty four, three hundred, three eighty four, what's that?
Eighty seven dollars and fifty cents.
Three and seven fifty. I got the name.
He wanted to, on top of that, eat half of the cost of cleaning. And you don't have, that's even, but you certainly can't, if you don't, it just can't deal.
So, I mean, is it?
You need a motion to charge that back with the.
Yeah. It's been properly moved by Supervisor Wilson, properly seconded by Supervisor Miltonson. Would that be in discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor, vote by using sign of I. Any opposed, may they have the same right, motion carried, you know?
Thank you, Mr. President. It's fifteen, that you all have outstanding. Let me know, I think the other one we have, I'll look or resolve itself, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct.
Did you get a copy of this letter that was sent to Lane Line, and the board was copied on the SAP oh one nine, which is the striping project with Lane Line? Just said from state aid, formal edit of the above designated contract is hereby accepted, you're released from any responsibility under contract. So it was completed with Lane. I'll need you to copy this.
That's all I have.
All right.
Good morning, Denise, I have a purchase clerk for Adams County Board of Supervisors. First of all, I would like to spread the Cuban car, the travel car, across the middle to approve for October.
You heard the request that a purchase clerk has been properly moved by Supervisor Hutchins? Proper second by Supervisor Wilson, would that be in discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor, vote by using sign of I. Any opposed, may they have the same right, motion carried, you know?
Okay, second of all, I would like to follow on the pest control contract, we read it, I gave it to Scott on the thirteenth to review, yeah, update on that through time.
Um, Mr. Attorney, do you have an update on the pest control contract?
Yes, Mr. President, I, a contract, I left it in front of Brandy's little placemat, if she, if she saw that, it didn't. And it still has it ready to be proved, it's, it's still be that contract with, with a blank filled in, and then they're, end up towards it. So, and I meant to text you this morning, Brandy, tell you that.
I got it.
All right, back to the contract, pest control, huh? Yeah, so the attorney has looked over it, attorney has looked over it, uh, it's been approved, so what would be the pledge of the board? Can I get a motion? Been properly moved by Supervisor Wilson? Proper second by Supervisor Miltonson, would that be in discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor, vote by using sign of I, I.
Is it a two-year contract? Yes, it is, thank you.
Any opposed, may they have the same right, motion carried, you know? Next, Mr. Brett.
Okay, this is letting, I think, going to start, as soon as we sign the contract, we're going to have to start immediately the following day.
All right.
All right, next we have Chesterfield bleachers and the lighting. It'll be in on November sixth for the Chesterfields sports lighting and the aluminum bleachers, ready for your foot. For the sports lighting, we had Hope Enterprise, it's two hundred and eighty three thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. Austin Electric, two hundred and sixty five thousand. Southern Electric Corporation of Mississippi, two hundred and nineteen thousand, eight hundred dollars. Was Southern Electric at the lowest bid.
All right, what's the pledge of the board?
Everything, both of these fell within the range of the architect estimate as well.
What was the architect's estimate?
Julie didn't give me that, he asked me to present, just let know, I can call.
That's okay, I was just curious.
Yeah, he just asked me to present it, and let, uh, fell within the range. So that's the one for the sports, we're going to vote on individually, right?
Make a motion to get them sold in electric.
Has been properly moved by Supervisor Milton to accept the lower bid. A proper second by Supervisor Wilson, would there be any discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor vote by using sign of I. Any opposed, may have the same right, motion carried now.
Okay, the, uh, aluminum bleacher retrofit at Chester Village, we only had one bid, Pond Enterprises, two hundred and thirty thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars.
And all this been within, that's actually where we discussed last meeting.
Yes, it is.
On the last time, all right, um, what's the pledge of the board? Been properly moved by Supervisor Milton. Been proper second by Supervisor Hutchins, would there be any discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor vote by using sign of I. Any opposed, may have the same right, motion carried now.
Okay, last thing I have is just to let you guys know, it's following up on the washer, it's been ordered, it should be in, we ordered it last week, it should be in seven to ten days, just a minute to make sure that it's been taken care of. And that's all that I have, any questions?
Anybody have any questions, uh, Ms., Ms. Price? There be no more, uh, questions, well, we thank you, Ms. Price.
Thank you.
Have a happy Thanksgiving.
Same for you, well, be safe.
Good morning, board.
Before I get started, I, I'd like to praise one of my deputies, uh, Kyle, who went on this week, and they had gotten Kyle's child in the swimming pool. The deputy was finding his west trial, when he got to the house and went around to the back, the child had been in the pool. The parent had got the child out of the pool, he started CPR on the child until AMR arrived on the scene. They took the child to, that's, I mean, Mary Hospital, it's the latest moving out, it looked like the child was born there, so. Yeah, West trial, you know, we sent him to law schools, he was trained in CPR and, uh, first aid, so it paid off. Also, I've got three hires into jail. For schedules in any order.
I don't have a letter. I do not see that you've got it. I do not have it.
I can make you copy, uh, the first one's gonna be Jamal Page, when we get a copy of the report?
Yes, I would appreciate you getting a copy. Rick, did you look at this?
Yes, sir.
This is red loose.
What, what?
I don't think I passed.
Yeah.
That's a red loose, that was your pad. For Brad.
Uh, for Robbie.
Oh, yeah.
He didn't sign it, he didn't sign it. Grab the other back, didn't. All right. You can, you can start, maybe sign off on that.
Okay, the first one's gonna be Jamal Page, as a correction officer in the jail, hourly rate is thirteen twenty-three. Her annual rate would be twenty-seven five eighteen forty.
All right.
The second one is Christie Robertson, same thing, jailer, hourly rate thirteen twenty-three, annual rate twenty-seven five eighteen forty.
And go ahead and look the next one.
All right, the last one is gonna be Devon Hamilton, same thing, jailer, hourly rate thirteen twenty-three, annual rate twenty-seven five eighteen forty.
I do have the paperwork, uh, with the necessary signatures, uh, what would be the pledge of the board?
Have to use new hires.
These new hires and.
Replace them.
Transfer and rehire. Yeah. Has been properly moved by Supervisor Wilson, proper second by Supervisor Hutchins, would there be any discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor vote by using sign of I. You know, opposed, may have the same right, motion carried now.
I got one other one, and I'm trying to get the pa- we had the paperwork, I didn't just bring it with me, I was planning on doing it next meeting. Uh, this is gonna be a deputy on Street, Roger Lewis, the second. I'm trying to get his number together now, let's see.
We don't need that paperwork, Mr.?
I got it, I, I'm, where you gonna get?
Yeah, we get it.
I'll get that through human resource.
Yes, I have the proper signature. All right, you can go ahead with this.
Thought it was the last one.
Well.
On Roger's.
Sir, um, I asked for, uh, what was it, pay?
It's gonna be seventeen eighty-seven.
Uh, debit. All right, uh, you heard the request from Mr. Nilla, uh, I need a motion, uh, pending necessary paperwork, move. It's been properly moved by Supervisor Gray. Proper second by Supervisor Wilson, would there be any discussion, is it in the budget?
This is a part of her, this one, so, I, I can review it, and well, is he coming out of two hundred?
It's, uh, deputy's right, I believe so.
Out of the administration?
Yes.
And is he replacing someone, or?
Yes, this one will be.
There, there, I just pulled the budget, they're within budget.
It's the same sale?
It's the same hours.
Okay.
Yeah, it's accurate.
All right, any more discussion? If there be no more discussion, all in favor vote by using sign of I. Uh, any opposed, may have the same right, motion carried now.
Also, the last thing, we had Alexis John shooting line from the jail. Alexis John.
Uh, Ms. Alexis.
Do you have a letter?
Jones.
Yes.
Can I?
I'll get you.
Can I get a motion to approve the resignation of Mrs. Alexis Jones from the, been properly moved by Supervisor Wilson?
Sir.
Proper second by Supervisor Gray, if there be no more discussion, all in favor vote by using sign of I. Any opposed, may have the same right, motion carried now. All right, anything else, Mr. Nilla?
The rate on, on this one is sixteen eighty-one.
Okay, rate correction, sixteen eighty-one.
That's the starting page because he's not certified.
All right, correction. Sixteen eighty-one.
And the annual will be thirty-four nine, sixty-four eighty.
All right.
I'll give you a copy of that.
All, all right.
That's all I have.
Yeah, well, we just need to, hey, get a copy, tell that, get it for our minutes, all right, next.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Ashaki Martin, I'm the comptroller for Adams County, I'm coming in to request a pay increase for Sharon, which I pay for her, who's performing, um, dual duties as HR.
This is the one that was, uh, brought up on last meeting, and I know everybody should be familiar with it, uh. That's the one of human resources that's been, uh, taking the dual duty as a human resource in, um. Clerk, uh.
Arrow.
Arrow clerk, so.
Give the total.
It's eighteen, three, it's eighteen dollar, thirty-seven, four to four.
And total, just give the total, add yourself.
Thirty-seven, four, 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 four.
And the money is in the book.
Yes.
It's been properly moved by Supervisor Wilson, proper second by Supervisor Hutchins, would there be any discussion? If there be no more discussion, all in favor vote by using sign of I. Any opposed, may have the same right, motion carried now.
Thank you.
All right. Next, Department of Report. Number of Department of Report, next public comment. Public comment.
He got public comment.
I'm Jack Stevens, and.
Stevens, yeah.
On behalf of the numerous citizens of Highway sixty-one South, we would like to have more information on the amendment to the Solid West Plan. Which you mentioned at your last meeting.
Well, Ms., Ms., uh, Stevens, I, I, I don't, I don't know any amendment, I'm, I'm not familiar with any amendment that's been made by the Adams County Board Supervisor.
It was discussed that an amendment would have to be made, I think, last.
In the bread, though.
And this gentleman, uh, uh, so, Mr. Bradley, can you get with, what, what amendment? Look, bring me up to speed. Hold, hold, hold one second, hold, hold one second, ask Supervisor Wilson to be excuse from the ground, before we discuss this.
Yeah, the only amendment, uh, what we're looking at is, I think, the board, uh, designated for the, for this project, uh, what we're looking at is our county emergency management plan. Uh, is that plan that has to, uh, incorporate any response, any litigation, uh, to the new plan, but, uh, right now, they hadn't been taking place because we ain't no M D Q. Once all that information start coming in, they start filing that paperwork they can approve, then it come back to us, and we gotta, uh, make sure that's in our county emergency management plan, we should have come back before the board. To do a amendment to that, to update it, to outfit that, so we, right now, that hasn't been done yet, because we still waiting on the proper, uh, licenses and permits.
Okay, that this has been submitted to D, D E Q?
No, we don't submit, once D Q authorized them to do that, then they'll contact us, we were paying the hammer, then at that point, we'll then go forward and say, we put it into the county emergency management plan, and the board approves that.
Where does it stand right now?
It, yeah, it's, right now, it's just, is it floating, we ain't nothing been set this out, yeah.
Is there a timetable for this?
No, we, we, they still working on it, but we don't, I, I did talk to, what's her name?
So, so, hold, let, let me get this clear, let, let me get that clarified, uh, we, you talking about the head for the county, uh, I'm trying to figure out. Cause you know, there's a lot, been a lot of confusion about this, and you know, I, I don't do a lot of Facebook and stuff like that, but I hear people looking. Um, Attorney, you, uh, you need to be listening, and you correct me if I'm wrong. I know, I, I seen it on there, it said M D Q, so I had somebody send me all of the, I mean, I didn't see, they didn't send nothing, anything to me, I just, somebody asked me to read some comments. And they said that it goes deeper than M D Q, um, for, for approving that, it, uh, I, I just read, cause it had to be, uh, landfill had to be, it just kind of treated like, uh, Grand Gulf Nuclear Plant. So they saying it is totally over our heads and everybody keep, you know, I, what Adams County Board of Supervisors responsible for. I wanna make it clear, if it's something that we are responsible for, or something that we can do, I wanna do that, but if, if, if you looking in the wrong direction for the question. Now that I'm, uh, dogging you, I wanna point you where you can get your questions answered properly, because at this point, if, if, a lot of people say, well, Adams County, but Adams County has no control over the landfill, like. Uh, Fort Gibson Board of Supervisor has no control over Grand Gulf Plant, do that make sense?
Well, has, has a request of the D E Q been made to look into this matter, or where does it stand?
That, that stands with the, that stands with the people who are operating, the people who are trying to get the company here. It don't, they don't have the answer to the Board of Supervisor, they don't have to come through the Board of Supervisors. They got the request through the state or the federal, well, you know what, that, that's who's gonna give them the request, it's not the Adams County Board of Supervisor.
I assume that request has been made.
So I, I have, we can't, can't answer that because.
So that's a private.
It's a private company, so, we don't, we couldn't answer that, because that's a private company applying for to open a business.
They have made the request to D E Q, right?
No, we don't, we don't track private, that's not a county government, so.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, what gonna happen is, once they make the request, we'll get notified, because we, the county has a hand in litigation program, that the Board of Supervisors have to prove. And then it has a litigation plan, it, all that got to be in there, it has to be updated, so that's the amendment that we have to talk about with that.
Have you heard from D E Q?
No, no, I haven't heard.
When you hear, then.
Right.
You're right.
Right, that's right.
Yes, that's a.
So, Mr. Stevens, if I'm not, uh, mistaken, is talking about the plan from you, your office.
Right, it's what I'm saying, which the board approved, that the board.
And that's the plan that the board approved.
Yes.
Yes.
Plan in his office.
Yes.
So, I'm gonna make a motion that, uh, we had, make sure we contact the residents in that area before we even approve any kind of plan.
All right, a motion has been made by Supervisor Gray to, and second by Supervisor Hutchins. To make sure that the residents of that area are notified before we, the board accepts the plan of the emergency management when it comes to the, uh.
Amendment.
The, uh, waste, uh, whatever it is, so, all field waste, thing, treatment thing, I mean, that's kind of.
So, so basically, you are waiting on D E Q.
Hang on one second.
Hold, hold, hold.
I carried the motion.
So, you got, you got, all right, would there be any discussion?
Ricky, that's in the form of a public hearing notice?
Yeah.
In the form of a public hearing notice, I just wanna make sure we get straight on our record. All right, would there be any more discussion? If there be no more discussion, all, all in favor, vote by using sign of I, I, any opposed, may have the same right, motion carried now.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that.
Okay.
So, you're waiting on D E Q, and once you hear from D E Q, that that will come before the board.
Right.
For amendment of your emergency operation plan.
Right.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right, so that. Now, and, 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 Mr., I just wanna let you know, I'm not trying to dog anything, I just wanna, a, a, and I want, want people to go in the right direction, because, you know, it gets confusing. Uh, with people saying the county, it's so much thing that the Board of Supervisors, uh, say we, uh, we responsible for that you really, people come a lot of times. Asking for questions that we really don't have. that we really don't have the answers to, and not just because we, not on the top of what we doing, it's because authorities over us, and I wasn't trying to dodge anything, I'm pointing you in the right direction, because I know nobody on this board, uh, uh, could stop any private person or citizen for wanting to go into business for their self, they had to go through the proper challenge, and what, what they was looking for, I think is getting confused that how it's going out, that the county approved it, but that was not the case, that's way more than, that's over the county's head, so that's get the federal and state, and so I just wanna make sure, I don't want you to feel in any kind of way, I just wanna point you and the rest of the citizens that you represent in the right direction, so you can get a clear answer, because truly, ain't nobody on this board can give you a clear answer.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir, Mr. Gray.
We just gonna have to do a little more investigation on this, because we live in, it's only two counties in, in Mississippi, and, and, and being Adams County, and there's no way in this world that anybody can bring anything to your county, that got the Board of Supervisors have a say so. I don't believe that, maybe it's true, but I'm gonna have to research that, uh, a little further, because if it's endangering the health and welfare of this community, the Board of Supervisors should have a say so on it. So, we need to investigate that.
Well, I would say to you, Mr. Gray, hey, get the attorney, uh, whoever we need to start investigating, and make it, if it's something that legally, that the board, uh, has jurisdiction of, that we can move forward and looking for, all I was trying to do is make sure that, I, I mean, I don't know what's in place about that, but I know what came before, uh, in the business, I just was doing, wanted to point those residents in the right direction, and, and I, I'm not, damn, you saying we need to, and I, and I agree with that, if it's something, uh, I'm not disagreeing with what you said, because things come in the county, uh, I guess you, you're right, we the leaders of the county, so the supervisor should have, uh, some kind of knowledge of, prior, uh, if legally to approve or disapprove some things, so, but we'll just investigate further, uh, and, and find out the legal, uh, aspects of it.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I wanna make sure I clear what I said.
Okay.
What I said was, that I believe that the Board of Supervisors do have some say so, and I'm not just singling out what's going on now, I'm just saying, if, if, if it have any kind of health endanger to our community, that we should have a say so, and I'm not just singling out this project, cause I ain't, I, I'm need to investigate what's going on on this project. That mean, anything that comes to this community, that endanger the health and wellbeings of our citizens, we should have some say so.
Yeah.
That's all I'm saying.
No, 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 I was clear.
I'm, I'm making it clear, wherever nobody think I'm singing it out.
Yes, sir.
This project, but I'm not.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Gray.
Thank you. All right, public comment next.
Oh, 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 get to that. Is this concerning the same issue? No, okay, I just want my truth to be clear.
All right. Good morning.
I submitted first, uh, a petition for reconsideration over the decision to make an increase on garbage collection, and after that, I submitted another petition for reimbursement, because in the wake of the increase, I started to do a little research on my own property, and the actual property that I had been, uh, charged for paying a fee for over a period of time was really not, uh, a, a household or anything. So, that's the first issue I wanna take up, I'm asking the board, because the board was asking me to settle up on an increase, so, I'm asking the board whether I'm entitled to reimbursement of the fees that I really didn't owe. That's one issue.
Well, Mr. Stokes, I do have this in here, uh, but I can tell you that, uh, I got it right here, and the first thing we gonna have to do is, uh, give it to the attorney. When the attorney come in, that, uh, the attorney go, uh, gonna have to look over and see what you got. Uh, cause I, I mean, like I say, that, then right now, you talking about property and, uh, assessing you on something that you didn't own, that what you said?
No, uh, it was, it's, it's, it's actually the same property. When the tax assessor, he told me that these two properties have been, uh, joined together, and therefore, I shouldn't have a one fee to pay himself too. So, it went on for a period of time, and, uh, I'm just not bringing the issue up in the wake of the increase. Uh, and I wanna address that too, I'm gonna be short and brief.
Yeah.
I was asking for reconsider.
Hold, 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 hold. Yeah.
Mr. President, so, I, ask him if he emailed Scott Slaughter about this, this, the situation?
Have you emailed, you, you haven't emailed?
No.
He has not.
Okay, this is similar, I, I perceive it similar, uh, question, that's why I asked. So, for property, the way I see, I understand it, he was assessed on two parcels, we only have one, and it really, and he asking for reimbursement, it really just depends on the timing of when the assessment was. So, if you can give his information, get him to talk about the, the P P I N, to give us the Corvette, the P P I N, and, and, or the address or whatever, I can research it, see if it's still timely for us to give a reimbursement for him.
Mr. President.
Well, yes. Go, 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 uh.
I just wanna ask you a question.
All right, uh. Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
So, Mr. Stokes, is this what you saying, you got a piece of property right here, and you have a piece of property over here, and you was paying garbage on both of those properties, so when they, uh, put those properties together, then they continue to charge you for two garbageing when you just had one piece of property?
Yes.
Okay.
And as a matter of fact, when I brought it to the sanitation department attention, and the last thirty-five, I mean, the very first edition, uh, she realized that, and she took it off. They did a, uh, slight investigation, they call it water company disney and other, none of that is it. So, that is something that I have concerning this, uh, uh, garbage collection issue.
Hold on, repeat your first name for the.
Stokes.
The address.
Thirty-one.
Hold on, hold on, Scott, let me get, I'm trying to clear page up for the rap. Give me just a second, uh, that, uh, Philly West, yeah, yeah. All right, all, all right, now, uh, Mr. Turner, I wanna cut you off, we're just trying to keep some clear minutes on this. All right, you can go ahead, now you had a floor.
Yes, yes, Mr. President, it sounds like if he made erroneous payments, again, it's up to, uh, a time of when they were done that we can seek reimbursement for, um, so if I can give his, his contact information over to Corvette, she gives the information over to me, and we can find out if it's still timely for us to do it. We, we certainly don't want anyone to make payments that they didn't, they didn't owe, um, but we also are capped at when we can get those reimbursements, and the law just sets a cap for it.
All right, you, did you hear, so, do it. Leave the, I'll leave this with, uh, in my folder, I'll leave this for him to look at, and I also, oh, your phone number's on here.
Yes.
Uh, Scott, I'll have it in my folder, he do have, uh, he do have his phone number on there. All right, all right, thank you, all right.
Did you have two separate addresses?
Uh, no, just that thirty-one, and they listed the next.
But they right beside each other? Okay, thirty-one, thirty-three, okay, but you all about those. And it's on one house?
There's one trailer over here, and the other trailer is not little, but nobody ever stayed there. There's, there's no, uh, uh, utilities there.
Okay.
So, that was the thing that I got in my mind, give me a household. That was the issue under law, but that's not a household.
All right.
And the other issue, I'm gonna be short and brief, when it came to my attention, uh, I saw the newspaper article and stuff like that, brought back members, I tell you, uh, matters has been fortunate for a long time. We must've had some praying people in order for us to escape the demonstration of a turn, tornado, hurricane, and all that. See how that flat land is, eh? Those people happened to be the elders. When I saw the picture, I couldn't attend to read it, because I was out of time. When I saw the picture of the meeting, and it established that most of the people that attended was the elderly people, and they wanted something. And I felt in my heart, it was right for them to make their request for it, and it'd been more appropriate that this thing balanced out in their favor too. Everybody's favor, you know, whereas there's any options that could have been looked at. Uh, I appreciate the key members that voted against it, and I'm just asking the board, you get together, bring this thing back to the table, and consider balancing it out. We just went through a massive heat summer, you know our fields was hit on the electrical side. And now we come out of that, and we gotta go into this, trying to adjust to that. And it was true and accurate when they were saying that we are owner fixed income. It was demonstrated, most of the elder people is helping out their grandchildren. They are helping out their grand, great grandchildren, trying to do what they can for them. So, I wish that they'll be taken out of consideration to look at. Most of the people really could adapt to a one time, because they are not a business where you got to, sometimes I can't even put the trash out, because they ain't got nothing yet. The little bit, I could wait it over the weekend and catch it money. So, it can be something done, and going into the business wise, look at Louisiana. Their public works system set up to where they, they do their own garbage collection. I'm just taking it to another level, I'm asking y'all to look at it, and, 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 and consider it a given. I was hard pressed when I saw it was the elders up in here. Demonstrating they're disappointed.
All right, Mr. Stokes.
I, 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 that's all I can do is ask you to reconsider, think about it.
Well said, Mr. Stokes.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
All right.
And that's what gonna make a better community, when we talk about we the people, we the people of this community, and we got to include everybody.
All right, Mr. Stokes. Thank you.
All right.
Uh, coming to the table, Supervisor Gray.
Uh, yes, I'm Mr. President. At the last conference we attended, uh, I think it was in New Orleans, we, uh, talked to, uh, D R A, and I talked to Southwest Planning about looking into some additional funding for, uh, Morgan Town Road, and, uh, Ms. Lenee Smith sent me an email that she needed some information from the, uh, county engineer to move forward, uh, with this information. So, uh, I guess, Scott? Can you hear me, Scott?
Yes, sir.
Did, did you hear what I said?
Scott asked about some more money for, for Morgan Town Road.
Yeah, the D R A, when we was in New Orleans, said you had a, a pot, a pot of money, and, uh, Southwest Planning was at the meeting down there, and I asked if we, uh, possibly get some additional funding for Morgan Town Road, and they told us to submit some, so, uh, Ms. Smith from Southwest Planning say she needs some information from the, uh, county attorney, I mean, county engineer. So, could you forward that information from her to him? I give her a, what she talking about, where he could get the, uh, information today?
Jerry, how's it, sir?
Thank you, uh. And I just wanna, uh, another thing, Southwest Planning came here about the, uh, one hundred thousand dollars that we set aside for, to help some needy families, and to my knowledge, is still no understanding of how to get this, uh, issue resolved, so Scott, do you know what to hold up now? Because I talked to other people in other counties that deal with other, uh, planning areas, and they don't have this problem, so I'm trying to figure out what is the problem, why we can't move forward with helping, uh, ten individuals that really need some help.
Yeah, I'll, I'll call, or you can send them whatever information they need, I thought I sent everything to them, but I'll, I'll call them, get, get on the, get on the game plane to do it, so. And I'll do, I'm sending that information out to Morgan Town Road, so.
Thank you, sir. Uh, another deal, I know we don't have time, but I did talk to the engineer about a miracle, uh, application, uh, the deadline is November the twenty-seventh, and, uh, I think they gonna reward projects May the eighteenth, March the eighteenth through May the ninth. I don't know did we, uh, submit anything to them, but, uh, that's for a miracle. Uh, did I read or email something about, uh, somebody from the audit department, or whoever we paying money to send us some information dealing with an updated audit? It must be last, last audit.
I haven't received anything from recent.
It must be last audit. And I'm gonna say this, uh, I just wanna thank God for allowing me to, uh, be able to continue to serve and represent the people of this before, and I wanna thank them for supporting me. I wanna thank them for all the phone calls, and stopping by my place of business, and, and, and what I had to go through, uh, in an election, and I don't think there is no place in no community for individual running for office have to go through what I had to go through. But at the end of the day, God is good. And you know, it, it, it tripped our part about the whole bill, because I didn't know anything about this, and a high school student hanging my shop with pictures on my phone, and asking me, Mr. Gray, have you seen this? I looked at it, and, and, and it was amazing, I say that to say this, we as leaders need to conduct ourselves in a order, because the kids are watching what we do. And we not gonna be able to tell the kids when they wrong, uh, uh, how to act, when they watching us, and we acting a certain kind of way, so I try to be in honor. Sometimes I don't be in honor, but part of the time, I try to be in honor. And, Mr. Stokes?
Yes, sir.
Could you, uh, get in contact with them that, and find out what's the holdup on they end of the Bible, the Morgan Town Road on the other face, please?
Yes, sir, I've got them coming in next week.
They coming here?
Yes, sir, the legal department's coming over to meet with me.
Thank you. And in the end, and I wanna, uh, congratulate the Jefferson County Football Team for moving on to the South State. I don't know the last time Jefferson County participated in a, uh, football South State. It's been a while, I know their basketball team usually be pretty competitive in the water championship, but I don't know about the football team. And I wanna congratulate A, A, A C C. I wanna congratulate A, A, ACC S. What an amazing year they had and, uh, everybody know they won the, uh, five A championship. And, I mean, it was jam packed up there. And I don't know what the community gonna do, but they need to do something for it. And if I'm not mistaken, uh, they might be Coach King, what, six championships?
Six championships.
Six championships? I mean, if, if, he ain't one of the greatest that done did it in Natchez. And I'd like to see who else you gonna put in that level 'cause he got six championships. Anybody else got five, four, three? I know he got six.
Probably not state championship.
So again, congratulations to the, uh, they can coach and staff and the young men that ACC C S.
I don't think she do that. Cause they like that. They like.
And, uh, I just wanna wish, uh, everyone a happy and safe Thanksgiving. And, uh, Ms. Gray, have we made the date for the swearing in?
Yes, it's Friday, December twenty second at nine at the same.
Okay. And the old bit where it's not sitting to go got to the Jackson family, the Foster family, Staples family, the Promise family, the Goodness family. And I think the former wife, I mean, the President Carter wife passed. And the Frisbee family. Uh, I just wanna say something about, uh, Ms. Frisbee. She was a police officer when I was with the city of Natchez. And they really don't make them like that no more. Uh, girl had a no nonsense approach. She was, uh, firm, but she was fair. And at the end of the day, that's how I'm gonna remember her is being firm and fair. And Mr. President, oh, uh, wanna wish, uh, Supervisor Wilson a happy anniversary. Let conclude my report.
Thank you.
Supervisor Hutchins.
I don't have any, uh, much because, uh, our, uh, engineer is not here. I had some things for him to let him know that the constituents are willing to pay that connection with, on their bill. So, uh, he's not here, so I can get in touch with him and let him know. Another thing is I just want congratulations. Congratulate all one state for beating Jackson State. Even though Darren's not in here to hear that, I think he didn't stay around for that reason.
I give the word.
Give him the word, pass the word. And, uh, that's all I have. And I wanna wish everybody a happy and safe Thanksgiving.
Supervisor Mills.
Yes, sir. Uh, I think that we need to do something to recognize Deputy Stroud. Uh, we got another deputy that we're supposed to recognize. We haven't done yet.
I think I had asked him if he would be here at the place. Yeah, me.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You need a motion, yes.
How about make a motion, recognize Deputy Stroud for what he did.
It's been, it's been properly moved by Supervisor Mills and properly seconded by Supervisor Wilson that we recognize Deputy Stroud, uh, for his duty service. Uh, would it be in a discussion? If there be no discussion, I would say vote by you can sign an I. Any opposed, may they have same right motion carried now.
Uh, last meeting, Mr. May, I talked to you about your crew. Do you know if y'all went and looked at that?
They did. I, I'll have to get back and get to this kid, Rob, so I will say.
Robbie, do you follow up on that? We have applications here for the veteran affair officers. Did we ever make a decision on whether or not what that position was gonna be?
I believe we part time.
Is that how it's advertised? Just wanna make sure. Um, received an email this morning, Robbie, about littering on, uh, Lower Level Road. Can we get your signs put up? On Lower Level and also, uh, Hutchins Landing. I had talked to you about that a couple of months ago. Not sure, uh, solid on that, please. Hutchins on the west side of sixty one. And could y'all please see if the trash guys would get down on Lower Level?
Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, Ricky did hit on A C. Uh, I wanna congratulate them as well. And also want to congratulate Coach King. Uh, I played for Coach King. And I know the impact that he makes on these young men's lives. I have ran in three elections now. And I can guarantee you at six thirty the day of the election, I won't get a text from David King. And, uh, the, the impact that he makes in these kids' lives and the way he stays in communication with them. You can't put a dollar sign on that. So I wanna congratulate them on a job well done. Uh, also I wanna wish all the residents of Adams County and employees of Adams County, happy Thanksgiving, have a safe holiday and, uh, spend time with your family. We all have luck. Thank you. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Mr., uh, this Mr. Wilson.
Okay, and, and, uh, not to beat a dead horse here, but David King is a good friend of mine and, um, I admire him for what he's done and, and, um, I agree with Wes. He, uh, he takes teenagers and turns them into men. And they still to this day, he still talks to players that he coached twenty years ago. Um, and he calls me all the time about, hey, I need some help with this, this kid's not getting to eat. Or whatever. And, uh, Dan and I do whatever we can for him. Um, good, cause there's a lot of people that work two jobs to send their kids to A C C S or wherever. And there's a lot of people that can't feed their kids that have kids in, in high school in, in natural time. But it, it's sad, but the community here does pull together. I've, I've, I've watched it a lot of times. They, everybody's always pitching in and it does take a community to raise children and, uh, congratulations again to David King and, and the A C C S. He has got a lot of help out there, a lot of extra coaches that, that do not get paid, but, but what, what they're doing for these children's lives, they'll never forget it. Um, and I'd like to thank the voters of District Two for giving me another chance to represent them. Um, uh, I appreciate, I appreciate them having that much confidence in me. Uh, a good friend of mine died over the weekend, Tommy Smith. He's eighty years old. Uh, lives in Angeles, Florida. Off of Hawkins Road. Um, but, uh, good man. I, I always liked this man. I know he's about ten years old. His funeral will be tomorrow. And another good friend of mine, Thelma Ruin Cam, well, she was ninety-five, sweetest woman, beautiful lady. Uh, till the end. Uh, yeah, I'm gonna be at Paul Bear at her funeral today. Um, my condolences to both, both families. Uh, Robbie, thank you for taking care of Tuppin' Road or Tuppin' Circle. And, uh, Winona, we're gonna do the speed bumps on it soon.
Yes.
Okay. And, uh, guys, the trash, uh, on Southwind Road is just out, out of control. Uh, I was, I was picking up signs there yesterday and, uh, or day before yesterday and it was like crazy.
Out of control 'cause people dumping it or?
Just bags of trash. I mean, just, it's just, it, it's terr- it's terrible out there. Um, I just got a, a text. Uh, can we do a resolution on Charles Adams? Who passed away on eleven, ten, twenty-three. Uh, and donate property in Grant's Playground. So, uh, uh, that's a motion.
It's been, uh, uh, it's been moved by Supervisor Wilson to do, uh,
Resolution on Charles Adams?
Charles Adams. He's wanted to donate the property to Grant's Playground.
Any former deputy?
So you said?
No, we, uh, we ready to hire a place. We gonna be on.
Okay.
Supervisor Hutchins. Would that be in discussion?
Uh, the tenth of, uh, November.
There be no more discussion? I would say. Any opposed, may they have same right motion carried now.
And that concludes my report.
Deputy Secretary Dean. Uh, Chancellor Kirk, Brandon Hood.
I have a couple of items. Uh, received Judge Myers certification for two months of her fall conference. And just need to have that swear across the minutes, please.
It's been properly moved by Supervisor Wilson. I get a second.
Second.
Proper second by Supervisor Gray. Would there be a discussion? If there be no discussion, I'll in favor, vote by you can sign an I. I. Any opposed, may they have same right motion carried now.
Need to have the October tax redemption settlement swear across the minutes, please.
You heard the question of Chancellor Kirk? Make it a motion. It's been properly moved by Supervisor Hutchins. Proper second by, uh, Supervisor Wilson. Would there be a discussion? If there be no discussion, I'll in favor, vote by you can sign an I. Any opposed, may they have same right motion carried now.
And this is within my budget. I wanted to send out in, uh, courtesy notices we have for the past couple of years for the postcard, um, for tax redemption. And we send those out in January, December, but you can't have approval, uh, from the board to do that.
Are you heard the question of Chancellor Kirk? It's been properly moved by Supervisor Mills and properly seconded by Supervisor Wilson. Would there be a discussion? If there be no discussion, I'll in favor, vote by you can sign an I. Any opposed, may they have same right motion carried now.
They not have an item to be turned.
Have I'm gonna be determined. All right. Scott, uh, this, uh, reimbursement for Judge Myers had you, I, I see it's back, it's on the desk, had you, uh, so, so you got clear, uh, you clear on that for me to get this approved?
Yes, Mr. President. Since it's authorized or actually commanded by statute, you've actually attended this training and that it was priorly, uh, uh, approved on a budget line item by the board supervisors. It's not a violation of law to do it. So we need, it's still against our policy, which is not illegal. We're gonna encourage her to, to do, to get advance notice in the future, but it's lawful for us to reimburse.
All right.
And I got that in writing too by, by, well, I, I sent the email, follow up conversation with, with the state on technical assistance. So who, who helped me, brought it solid.
Yeah.
Bring me up today, right?
On the last meeting, uh, Judge Myers in the, uh, had went to a conference and it was, uh, dated, uh, October the second. And, uh, but it hadn't been pre-approved through that. But it's, Scott, I just wanted to make sure that we reimburse because our policy, uh, states that we get prior authorization, but by state statute, by her being a judge, there's mandatory training. Oh, you heard, Scott. That's, that's, that's all it is. Uh, so I need a motion.
So no.
It's been properly moved by Supervisor Gray. Uh, can I get a second? Proper second by Supervisor Hutchins. Would there be in discussion? If there be no discussion, I'll in favor, vote by you can sign an I. Any opposed, may they have same right motion carried now. All right.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr.
Uh, it's a right from my, my report.
I skipped you. You just hold on one second. I'm gonna come back to you.
Outside out of mind.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Everybody was outside out of mind. I've got you on the phone. I'm gonna come back to you. I'm in the middle of getting this together right now.
Yeah, sir.
Gonna get you. All right. Um, so I have two telecommunications. And this is, uh, pay rate increased to twelve sixty. Uh, Franklin Curtis Chapman and Terrence Brown to twelve sixty an hour. It's been signed off on. Uh, has it been, uh, properly looked at, uh?
Yes, sir. I just looked at it.
That's, that's not E nine one one?
That's E nine one one.
Yeah, it's again sixty, yeah. And it's been pre-approved? I mean, it's been, yeah. All right. So it is. All right. So I need a motion to approve. Can I get a motion? Huh?
No move.
It's been properly moved by Supervisor Gray and proper second by Supervisor Hutchins. Would that be in discussion? If there be no discussion, I'll in favor, vote by you can sign an I. In, 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 in a poll, may they have.
He did say it was in the budget.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right. What we got? Is this a new hire for Justice Court? Uh, Jerica Horton. Um, effective date eleven twenty-eight, hourly rate twelve dollars, twelve dollars. It has been properly signed off on by Human Resource. Lady, can I get a motion?
So no.
It's been properly moved by Supervisor Gray, proper second by Supervisor Wilson. Would there be in discussion? If there be no discussion, I'll in favor, vote by you can sign an I. Any opposed, may they have the same right? Nay, uh, it's been nay by Supervisor Hutchins. All right. Motion carried now. No, no, it's a new hire. That's the one. We had a meeting, um, when you was in Vegas. All right. This time let you give your report before I finish. The end of mine, you can go ahead now.
Yes, Mr. President. Uh, I want to accept recognition of Walker's eager immediately. Uh, that's been submitted, submitted over to us and we go ahead and do it. We'll, we'll give further payment.
All right, uh, we had, uh, resignation of Walkers in, in eager law firm. They, uh, they resigned. Uh, we need a motion to accept their resignation from, uh, being our lawyers. It's been properly moved by Supervisor Hutchins. Can I get a second?
Second.
Been proper second by Supervisor Wilson. Would there be in discussion? If there be no discussion, I'll in favor, vote by you can sign an I. I. Any opposed, may they have same right motion carried now.
Uh, Red Cross rents from us over at the DHS building, uh, and some available space that we have that not we pay is, is they pay us is two hundred dollars a month. Um, that, that term is expiring and they asked the board to go another, um, like another two years for us. Uh, after teamwork one, the week we got void bullet, you're right. Um, does, does the board wanna continue on with that leave, that program?
Yes, I think that we will, after hearing the time, uh, what's the plan to the board? So can I get a motion? It's been properly moved by Supervisor Gray. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Wilson. Would there be in discussion?
Yeah, it's the, the adopted here, it's previously adopted, uh, is why we're doing this instead of putting it out for bid and so forth. Just explaining the benefits of Red Cross, which they, they have and that's all we want here.
Yes. All right. Would there be any more discussion? I'll in favor, vote by you can sign an I. Any opposed, may they have same right motion carried now.
Okay. The next thing, uh, I, with, I'm sorry. I didn't have to hold up. I didn't help. Put a thing on the wall. Um, I got an item to be determined and then before we leave the past, I'm bringing myself about the American Recovery Act funds. What, what the board can go ahead and do is, uh, I got a, uh, declaration that we had, we're gonna take the maximum, um, amount of, uh, deduction for lost revenue, which exceeds how much we were given. Uh, that will, that will stop us from having to spend any money. But before any deadline.
You heard, you heard the request at the time? Can I get a motion?
Second.
It's been properly moved, Supervisor Wilson, proper second by Supervisor Gray. Would there be in discussion? If there be no discussion, I'll in favor, vote by you can sign an I.
I.
I. Any opposed, may they have same right. Aye. Any opposed, may he have same right motion carried now.
And. Mr. President, already?
Yes. You're in.
And we all.
Go ahead.
Uh, yes, I need a resolution, uh, of intent. For a, uh, line of credit in case we need it, uh, with Concordia Bank. I'm trying to read you the. The percent rate for you. Not fifteen, one point five million. Um, I'm just still pulling up. I'm sorry, I thought I had it pulled up already. Three point four five percent would be what we would be interested if we draw. On March fifteenth of twenty twenty-four.
All right, I heard the question at the attorney. So it's been properly moved by Supervisor Gray.
Second.
Proper second by Supervisor Wilson. Would that be in discussion? If there be no discussion, I will say vote by using sign of aye. Any opposed, may he have same right motion carried now.
That concludes my report.
All right.
Yeah, I got one thing. I'm sorry. I missed on my report. Uh, we're gonna pick up a check this afternoon to go pick the truck up, and we pick up tomorrow. And, uh, Tim Chapman and Mary Anderson will be going to you.
Okay. Yeah, well, um. I'd just like to also say, uh. Congratulations to, um, AC on their champion, um, win, um. And it's good that our community gets together and, um, recognize everybody, and I always said, you know, a community, we, we have differences in our community, but. Uh, we still need to acknowledge all the things that, uh, go on in our community. So many things that, uh, goes on negative. That negativity seems like it gets so much attention around here from everything. But it's the positive things that we do, um, don't get as much recognition, but we need to realize this. When it comes to Adams County. I don't care if it's the school. I don't care if it's crime. I don't care if it's law enforcement. I don't care when it comes to the board supervisor. They do not look at us, uh, as a split. They, everything goes to Adams County. So, you know, I'd just like to say, you know, congratulations to everybody, and before they're swearing in, uh, I, I, I'll say this to the board. But I pray that God had to remind me, what am I elected for? I'm elected here to serve these people. And we can get more done, and I would like to, I'm not gonna worry about. Waiting until twenty twenty-four. But I'm gonna start on today, trying to move past a lot of things that we had differences. And see what the things that we can have in common to move Adams County together as a whole. And it is Thanksgiving season, so, you know, traditionally, it's a season to be loved, and I would like to say happy Thanksgiving to each and everybody that's on this board. Uh, each and every family that's represented in all of the community. And I apologize that I was, I'm a little bit wood together this morning, uh, cuz, uh, I'm not used to. Standing up twenty-four hours, uh, that's way past behind me. Um, you know, and I would like to say, uh, congratulations to some of my folks that, you know, I'm a cowboy, a real cowboy. I got up at three thirty yesterday morning, drove down to Lake Charles, well, by Lake Charles for a rodeo, and they had twice as many teams, and. Uh, I caught myself taking a driver with my nephew. So my nephew realized it's twice as many teams. He gave me the keys and said, I'm going home. I gotta ride. So it was about five o'clock this morning when I drove in and put the last horse up. And took a shower about six o'clock and had to get back up to be here for the board meeting this morning. But, uh, it was a Bull Walker Invitational, um, Davidge Griffin and, um. Nisha Hamilton. We did bring two salads back to, uh, Adams County and a profit of about five thousand dollars, so. I didn't get into that chick, but nephew's representing well, and I would like to say congratulations to them. I apologize, and I'm gonna try to cut it off cuz I'm tired and I'm sleeping, and I hope you have a short, like, dig in session so I can go home. That concludes my report.
Mr. President. I don't know if I, uh, did this, but I'm gonna do it again anyway. I want to congratulate Mayor Gibson on the honor he received and, uh, local government from the, uh, state board.
All right, I need a motion for closed termination.
So.
It's been properly moved by Supervisor Hutchins.
Second.
Proper second by Supervisor Wilson. Would that be in discussion? If there be no discussion, I will say vote by using sign of aye. Any opposed, may he have same right motion carried now.